Everyone for coming, I guess because I'm the new president. Hopefully I expect it, meeting to be full this way, uh, this meeting to be full every month. All right. Let's take a start. Vocal strike that. Call board, a regular meeting of the Keansburg Board of Education will be held in the Bolger Middle School Learning Center. Adequate notice for this meeting has been mailed to the Asbury Park press, filed with the municipal clerk of Keensburg, posted on the district website, and posted inside the office of the Keansburg Board of Education, 100-pound place, Keensburg, New Jersey, on January 11th, 2025. vocal.
Mrs. Fizell. Ms. Kelly Armoran.
Here.
Mr. McGaskey.
Here.
Mr. Kitchen.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Hoff.
Here.
Mr. R.
Here.
All right, please rise for the predilection.
Predilection to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In case of emergency, we have four exits. There's two behind you, there's two to your right, my left. We're not going to leave them tonight, but um, before we do some, um, one of my favorite parts of being on a board member, give out some, um, no, we do, um, some presentations. We just take a moment and think about the children of the wildfires in California. Not only did some of them lose their homes, but they also lost some schools. So hopefully, um, somehow, some way, within the next couple of days, they can be back learning. All right? With that being said, we have some presentations and some correspondence. So.
Uh, we start off with the educator of the year recipients, and we'll start with Ms. Hazeldin, with Early Learning Center.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see a full house. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Pizzani.
We can do better than that. Come on, keep going.
Ms. Pizzani is amazing. She's one of the first people to arrive in the morning. She creates whimsical and fun and imaginative lessons for her, for her students. She works beautifully with Ms. Soto, who's also in the back there. Shout out to Ms. Soto. They really understand that, um, working collaboratively, um, with each other and with the rest of the preschool team makes everything better for kids. I'm not going to read the whole thing, because we have quite a long, uh, evening, but I do want to say that, um, you know, it can be a stressful routine for our children to come in at curbside, and, um, Ms. Pizzani, um, has sometimes been seen dressed as a giant dinosaur on occasion, um, making it fun and whimsical, um, doing some mob scene style dances with other inflatable, uh, creatures at our curbside arrival. She is dedicated to doing what's right for our students. Um, she's an advocate, she uses her relationships with families, with our students, with colleagues, and within this community, um, to ensure the well-being and academic success of our students. So it is for these reasons and many more, um, that we congratulate Ms. Lauren Pizzani. Ms. Pizzani, everybody. Next, I want to give a special congratulations to Ms. Bonnie Walling. Um, Ms. Walling has two titles, um, on paper, but she wears many, many more hats. Um, she is our preschool intervention and referral team specialist. She is also our community parent outreach specialist, and, um, she gets an extra special shout out for being our early childhood advisory council, uh, chair. So in that position in particular, she, uh, regularly has over, uh, 25 local community agencies collaborate four times a year. Um, we just recently had all of those people come to a community resource fair that was organized in our beautiful new facility. They were very, very pleased, uh, to be able to come into our community and share those resources. Impeccable to her word would probably be the, the hallmark of, of Bonnie's personality. Uh, she makes it a point to get to know every student, she makes it a point to get to know their families. Some families support on her for years after they've, um, left and been to the preschool, and now we're getting to the age, not that I'm, want to throw us out there, where, um, some of our students are having babies, and, um, she is supporting those babies as well. She is a caring advocate for our students and our staff and our families, um, and members of our community. She knows how to support our students, she provides loving and caring and thoughtful coaching to our teaching staff. She's knowledgeable, reliable, caring, um, and most of all, um, it's her quiet determination to do what's best for our children and families. That is why I believe this is the second time that she's been, um, given this honor. So without further ado, Bonnie Walling. All right, and last but not least, Ms. Michelle Barschewski. I have to say this, because if you take a look at her right now, it literally said in like multiple variations of her nomination forms, that she does what she does with a smile on her face. So we, we love and appreciate that. Um, the children in her class, and she is one of our, um, our bus attendants too, absolutely love her. She's an outstanding educator who goes above and beyond for her students, families, colleagues, and our school community. She's empathetic, she's approachable, she's caring, children are drawn to her, and their families feel safe in confiding even the most difficult matters with her. It's these authentic relationships that last long beyond our students' years in preschool. Uh, she does things in the classroom and for our program that nobody even realizes, because she does it quietly and without fanfare, because it's what's best for kids. She gives up her time in and out of school, and it is for these reasons and so many more that she is loved and respected throughout her very long career here in the Keensburg School District. So without further ado, Michelle Barschewski. All right, welcome, everybody. Uh, before we start, I think it's just really important to note how these people are chosen. We do not pick these people, the administrators don't pick these people. Your colleagues nominate you, they take time out of their day to write nominations, and then there's a committee that votes for you. So it's a process, it's not just a pick out of a hat. Um, so you've done something special to be recognized by your colleagues, and I think that's probably what's the most special. So I just wanted you to know that. Okay. We would like to congratulate Ms. Felicia Higgins on being named, go ahead. On being named Caruso Schools Educational Services Professional of the Year. She is lovingly known as Ms. Felicia, the one who graces our halls with her big hellos and her giant smile that you will see. She's the OT lady, she's the one with the fun room. Ms. Felicia is always excited to work with her students, and they share that excitement when she goes to pick them up for their sessions. As a matter of fact, students who are not on her caseload want to know how they can get a turn to go with Ms. Felicia. Students feel like they've hit the jackpot, or that they've won a reward, when it's their turn to go with her, which I hope warms her heart as much as it does ours and her colleagues. Felicia is a rock star in meetings, always professional, poised, and understanding with parents and staff. She is a phenomenal resource for staff and the families of the students that she sees, and those that she doesn't see. She's been known to help create plans and accommodations for students who are not on her already heavy caseload. She goes above and beyond expectations, and what makes her so special is her doing so in such a positive upbeat way, every single day. Her dedication to our students and their development does not go unnoticed, and we are so happy to bestow this honor on her. So thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Felicia Higgins.
We are proud to congratulate Ms. Vanessa Torres as a Caruso Educator of the Year. Mrs., sorry. Mrs. Torres exemplifies qualities of a dedicated professional, creating a warm and inviting environment for her students. Her colleagues have both praised her bright and cheerful demeanor, as well as her willingness to support both her students and staff. Mrs. Torres is a true team player, always willing to share ideas and collaborate with her fellow teachers. Her dedication and hard work are evident as she is often, I'm nervous. I, I can't help it, sorry. Hate speaking in public. Often one of her first teachers to arrive in the building each day. Mrs. Torres exemplifies compassion and kindness, intera-, interactions with both her students and staff, making a positive impact daily. We are incredibly fortunate to have her teaching at Caruso. Congratulations, Mrs. Torres.
Family photo, family photo. Congratulations. Hold on, I have too many copies. Here it is. Last but not least for Caruso, we would like to congratulate our right hand as well, Mrs. Lori Ryan. Ms. Ryan has won the Caruso Educational Support Professional of the Year Award. Everyone that knows, everybody that knows a school knows that one of the biggest backbones is the building secretary. Between keeping track of daily attendance, answering phones, making purchases, staying organized, and sometimes acting as a sounding board for anyone who comes through the main office, Ms. Ryan fulfills all of these daily responsibilities and more. Her unwavering dedication, exceptional organizational skills, and genuine care for our school community make her an invaluable asset to our school. Her commitment to the students, staff, and families makes her a deserving recipient of this recognition. Thank you so much for everything you do for us, and congratulations, Lori Ryan. Lori and Ryan.
Good evening, welcome. I'm Joe LaRocca, the principal here at Bolger Middle School. On behalf of Ryan Lillis, our vice principal, I want to congratulate, uh, Bolger's winners. I know Ms. McMahon explained how the process works, but I think it's important for our winners to hear what their colleagues wrote about them, seeing them in action every day. I know it means a lot more than anything I have to say. Um, so I want to congratulate our teacher of the year, Ms. Amy Dolan. Ms. Dolan exemplifies professionalism. She's been very flexible over years, embracing new teaching challenges with a positive attitude. She is structured and organized, this is evident in how her classroom operates and how her students behave. Students respond to her with respect, she in turn respects all of her students, no matter their capabilities. She works hard to make sure that all of her students' needs are met, and she holds her students with high expectations and strives for them to be their best. Outside the classroom, she is valed in the union secretary and a building rep. She also started Big Brothers and Big Sisters Program. Due to the effort she put forth, our Big Brothers and Big Sisters Program is the biggest in Monmouth County. There are so many great teachers at Bolger, but there can only be one educator of the year. This person does not like all the attention, but she's, she is deserved to be recognized. I worked with her over the years and find that she puts 110% effort in everything she does. If you witness her teach, you will be, you will see the passion and drive she puts forth. I would like my child to have her as a teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Dolan.
All right, I have the pleasure of announcing our educational service, services professional. Um, it's Jessica Hansel. Mrs. Han- Mrs. Hansel is an amazing speech therapist. She's housed in two different locations and services children from pre-K and grade six through eight. Ms. Hansel is always willing and wants what's best for her students. Ms. Hansel not only makes her students enjoy learning, but makes sure they reach all of her goals. We love her so much here at Bolger, we appreciate everything she does on a daily, daily basis. Thank you very much, Ms. Hansel. Got it.
Unfortunately, our educational, um, support professional is unable to be here tonight, but I'd like to, uh, congratulate and thank, uh, Ms. Julie Anne Jarami, which we'll recognize her at another, another time. So congratulations.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Sean Brophy, principal of Keensburg High School. It's Mr. Bird, our assistant principal. These are one of the best nights. So I'm going to do something a little different, they're not going to enjoy, I'm actually going to enjoy this, ask the staff members to kind of come up as we speak about them. Teachers don't take a lot of credit for all the work they do, so, well, you get the spotlight for a little bit longer tonight. So Ms. Carly, come on down. So, we announce the teachers and staff members of the year usually during the day. We played a little prank on, on Carly this year. We did it after school. We used the girls' basketball team to fake an injury. Carly was working with the wrestling team, had her student trainers, who she works hard with, go pull her out of practice, comes running into the gym, and then her face was like, you know, of concern, and then even more concerned, she's like, I don't know what, I can't diagnose the issue, because there really wasn't an issue. We just wanted to kind of put her into an element where the kids that love her and support her, and it only works because she embraces the kids, the kids love her, and she just comes with a fun attitude every single day. So, Ms. Carly Lewandowski is a tremendous asset to Keensburg High School in numerous ways, wearing many hats. It's not uncommon for her to volunteer the day before or answer an early morning phone call to come in early and help fill a needed position for the day. That might have actually happened about 45 minutes ago also. So beyond her willingness to substitute, Ms. Lewandowski is a skilled, patient, knowledgeable, and kind teacher's assistant in the classroom, helping some of our special education students. Her calm and attentive approach helped make students comfortable working with her. These qual-, qualities also shine through as our athletic trainer, where Ms. Lewandowski devotes time and care to meet the needs of student athletes as well as coaches. She uses her professional knowledge to keep individuals healthy and safe. She works weekends, holidays, and for hours beyond what other people have any idea how long she works. Her dedication to KHS and support of our students and programs is unwavering and greatly appreciated. So congratulations to Ms. Carly Lewandowski, Keensburg High School's Educational Support Professional of the Year. You. Well, you got one of these too, Carly. Oh man, so where's the last one? Three for three. Aggressive, well deserved. I mean noted Carly was at a basketball game a half hour ago. All right, Ms. King, come on down. Ms. King's dedication to her students is admirable. She goes above and beyond every single day to ensure that her students are not only academically supported, but emotionally nurtured as well. Her unwavering commitment to their success is evident in everything she does, providing one-on-one counseling, assisting groups of students, or collaborating with teachers and parents. Ms. King's genuine sense of concern helps her build strong relationships with her students, fostering trust and a safe space for them to thrive. She won the lottery, because as someone who has an office right next door, and someone who consistently leans on her for assistance, I can say, this King is truly a team player. She works tirelessly to complete tasks promptly, and her contributions to the school community extend far beyond her counseling duties. She is always willing to, to collaborate with fellow educators, administrators, and parents to ensure each student has the resources needed to be successful. Her positive attitude, strong worth at, work ethic, and collaborative spirit make her an invaluable member to the KHS team. Congratulations, Ms. Kelly King, Keensburg High School's Educational Services Professional of the Year. All right, last but not least, Ms. Bonnaly, come on down. All right. So, the reason we all kind of work each day for, for everybody here, right, is to help and work with students. So, as much as I would love to take, and, and Ms. Bonnaly, I think has, she doesn't know I'm going to say it, but she has, she's aware of the words I'm about to read. I could gloat on the teachers at KHS all the time, and I like, would love to do so, and I would do the same with ease for Ms. Bonnaly. But again, we're, we're here for students, so, one of the, as, as, um, Ms. McMahon said, one of the referrals or, or, um, nominations we received was from a student. And this person, this individual, and I do have her permission to read it, put, put it better than I probably could have. So I'm going to read what the, um, nomination that was submitted by a student with regards to Ms. Bonnaly. This specific teacher stands out amongst all others. She goes above and beyond what is asked of her. She makes personal relationships with all of her students, and has specifically impacted me immensely. Freshman year, I struggled with confidence. Ms. Bonnaly was the first teacher to ever help me with my personal life as well as my education. Looking forward to seeing her and going to her class every day gave me a reason to come to school. Her positive and bubbly personality is contagious and never fails to brighten my day. I truly look up to the person she is. I wouldn't be the person I am today without her influence on me. I will forever be grateful for her and will continue to take her lessons with me throughout the rest of my life. I can't say it better than that. Congratulations to Ms. Bonnaly, Keensburg High School Teacher of the Year.
So also part of the process, along with all the different schools, there is a district recipient for two different categories. Those recipients are chosen by another committee that's formed of past recipients, representatives of the Keensburg Administrators Association, the Keensburg Education Association, and some community. So from all the people that you just heard of, there is two district recipients. And the district recipient of Keensburg School District Educator of the Year is Ms. Lauren Pizzani. This is a surprise when people get this one, so. Get up here. Thank you. And the final district-wide recipient in this category is considered District Educational Support Professional of the Year is out of Keensburg High School, Ms. Carly Lewandowski. This year in addition, if Officer Serrano could please come up.
All right, I'm gonna keep this quick, because no one wants to see a six-three guy cry. For nearly a decade, John has been more than a school resource officer. He has been a steady presence in our hallways, a role model for our students, and a trusted colleague to every one of us. John understood that his badge and uniform represented more than authority. They symbolized a commitment to keeping our students safe and fostering trust. Whether it was greeting students with a smile each morning, lending a listening ear when someone needed support, or helping resolve conflicts, John always went above and beyond. John, as you prepare your return to the road, we thank you for your service, your kindness, and your friendship. Congratulations, John, and best of luck as you move forward.
So just give us a couple of minutes, and then we'll take a break for photos. And I promise the King kids, they can have cookies. All right? So with that being said, these, the individuals who represent Bolger School are Lupin Folks and Jessica Lammy.
Bolger Middle School wishes everyone a very happy new year.
The Bolger Middle School Spout Down took place Thursday, January 16th. The overall winner was Alana Sanders from grade eight.
The eighth grade students were measured up for their cap and gown and look forward to wearing them at, at the potential ceremony this Ju- June. They also have, had their cap and gown pictures taken this week. Parents will be able to purchase them, and they will also be featured in the Class of 2025 yearbook.
Our wrestling team ended their season on Thursday, January 16th. Our wrestlers did an outstanding job and are now awaiting placement in an upcoming tournament.
The basketball teams and cheerleaders are still in full swing with their schedules. We have many students and faculty members coming to support them at these events.
The E, the E-Gaming Club continues to be an enthusiastic group of students who are making this new club a big success.
The eighth grade students received the big group picture and they had, that they had ordered and purchased in November. A copy is hanging outside of the door to the media center. Also, one will be placed in the 2025 yearbook.
The multicultural club still draws many students from grades six, seven, and eight. They all have fun with the various activities.
Some of our drama club members are participating for the, or practicing for the Keensburg High School Spring Musical.
Bolger's Bayshore Band is practicing very hard for the Spring Musical. This year, it will be held on February 5th at 6:00 PM at Henry Hudson School.
Bolger's second marking period ends this Friday on January 27th.
Mrs. Lee Antonio's gifted and talented students will be going on a few upcoming field trips. The sixth grade students will be going tomorrow, Wednesday, January 22nd to the Middletown Arts Center. Next week, on Wednesday, January 29th, it will be the seventh and eighth graders' turn to attend the trip at the same location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representing the high school, Mr. Jaden Araris? Jalen? Jaden, sorry, my man.
Good evening, everyone. We hope that you all had a wonderful holiday season and that your new year is starting off strong. The Keensburg High School has been preparing for their midterms all month and will be taking them throughout this entire week. At the same time, our sports teams have been making really incredible strides throughout the month of January. Our girls' basketball team is currently showcasing a ten-and-one record. Our wrestling team went to the Buck Classic this past Saturday, and not only did we rank sixth out of sixteen teams, but we came home with multiple medals. Congratulations to Daniel Slover and Michael Burke for coming in third, Jaden Johnson for coming in second, and Shaun the Tank Reda for his first-place win. Shaun also won the Upper Weight Outstanding Wrestler Award. So again, a huge congratulations to all these athletes. Senior days are also coming up for all winter sports. Bowling was today, wrestling is on January 29th, girls' basketball is on February 6th, and boys' basketball is on February 18th. In other news, the Psychology and CLIA program arranged an incredible K-9 demo lesson from the Monmouth County Sheriff's Office. Officer Izzy brought in his two K-9 partners, Reese and Fuzz, Fuse, and discussed their various jobs of locating dangerous items and apprehending criminals. It was an incredible experience for all involved. Our clubs and grade-level committees also have some announcements to share. The gift option will be hosted on March 14th, and bingo bundles are available per free sale. Please contact Ms. Fornash or Ms. Lopez with any questions. The Key Club received a call from the Parade Committee and was invited to march in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which we are very honored to attend. Ms. Myra is also putting out a reminder to all staff and seniors to please email her a baby picture for the yearbook as soon as possible. Last but definitely not least, we want to once again congratulate our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Bonnaly, our Support Professional of the Year, Mrs. Lewandowski, and our Educational Service Professional of the Year, Mrs. King. Your dedication to our school never goes unnoticed. Thank you for your time.
Again, I promise you, less than three minutes. We'll do some committee reports. Go ahead, Mr. Cook, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to state that we had a financial meeting earlier this evening. All seems to be financially sound, but if you're gonna notice in the packet today, we have our audit that's gonna be accepted. There was no findings, which is a great, great thing, and it shows the proof, the powerhouse team that we have here in Keensburg School District. So thank you to all of them, and thank you.
Before we go to executive session, I wanna thank everybody for coming. Again, next month, we're gonna have awards too, for something. I don't know, but we will. So, with that being said, we have to read something.
Be it resolved that in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Keensburg Board of Education shall conduct a closed executive session pursuant to the personnel and legal exceptions prescribed by NJSA 10:4-12 for the purpose of discussing legal. It is anticipated that the length of time for this executive session will be forty minutes, and that action will be taken in public after the executive session. Be it further resolved that the minutes of the executive session will be released when the need for confidentiality in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12 no longer applies.
Mike, can you please have a motion?
Uh, Karen? Mrs. Clayton? Ms. Callaher Moran? Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Ms. Ferraro?
Again, thank you for coming. Please enjoy some refreshments while we go take care of some housecleaning businesses. Thank you. Again, thank you for coming. Please enjoy some refreshments while we go take care of some house cleaning business. Thank you.
Superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following items. Under personnel, one, leave of absence medical; two, leave of absence for community and family; three, substitute teacher or power professional for the district; four, twenty-four, twenty-five attendance at DAA NJ workshop; five, professional development costing one hundred and fifty dollars Five, professional development costing a hundred and fifty dollars or above.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? All right, see you now.
We'll call Mrs. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski.
Yes.
And Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Hoff.
Yes.
Ms. Farrar.
Yes, I have favor on number four.
Thank you.
Under general, number six, disposal of unusable outdated rope and furniture and equipment. Number seven, acceptance of a donation, Kingsburg Learning Center. Number eight, acceptance of donation, Joseph C. Caruso Elementary School.
Can I get a motion please? Give me a second.
I'll second.
Any discussions? I do, please, can we, on number eight, can we please, uh... Oh, we did, okay. Thank you, just hand out and say thank yous for the donations. Nice better, number one K.
We'll call Mrs. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes, and thank you to the donations.
Mr. Hoff.
Yes.
Ms. Farrar.
Yes.
School Business Administrator Board Secretary's report. I certify that no item has been over expended. And that sufficient funds are available to meet the district financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. Payroll certification for December thirteenth and December twentieth. Superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following items. Receive and acceptance of December's board secretary's report. Two, approve appropriation transfers. Three, approve the bills list. Four, approve home instruction. Five, approve added district tuition. Six, approve consultant. Seven, approve mental health association of Monmouth County memorandum of understanding. Eight, accept- acceptance of the twenty-three, twenty-four annual audit with no audit findings. Nine, approve banking institution signatures.
May I get a motion please?
I'll make that motion.
Give me a second. Any questions, concerns?
Yes, for school.
Uh, can I get a little more contact than number six? Uh, this is your destiny, anyone else?
So we had a student who was hospitalized and needed bedside instruction. So that's a hospital that we haven't used.
They're gonna be consulting on...
They're gonna provide the home instruction library.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Okay.
Sir.
We have a motion. We'll call Mrs. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Hoff.
Yes.
Ms. Farrar.
Yes.
School Business Administrator Board Secretary, Dendam. Superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following items. BS one, approve added district tuition. And BS two, approve the kinney pedo tuition.
Uh, may I please get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah? Yeah.
Any, any questions, any concerns?
We'll call Mrs. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Hoff.
Yes.
Ms. Farrar.
Yes.
All right, this time I let open the meeting to the public. Are any questions related to your additional concerns? See that there's no open public. Or closed opposition? Any communication through the boardroom? Clayton?
I'm just wanting to congratulate all the recipients of the awards. You really did a lot for us. Thank you.
I reiterate, sir. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, of course, extend celebration and congratulations to the educators of the year and to Officer Serrano, who he's deeply missed, but I know he's a big type in the community, so I'm sure he'll still be sitting around. Again, I want to really, really congratulate the finance team and the administration on the radio.
Well, double.
Thank you.
Ms. Schwan?
May I please, Miss Clayton, we should look at our key to have the good for the educators and sports staff. And for Officer Serrano, this team is all, um, made it here from far away to the city.
Outstanding. Ms. Farrar?
If you repeat the same thing. I'm sorry, I agree.
So if everything I said is true, really just a repeat of everything. Just also want to thank everybody for attending tonight. It's nice to come into a meeting with...
The room full.
So I also agree with my colleagues in our institute pool to the awards that we're giving out tonight. But I also have to recognize our school principals and our central office. We don't have the awards for them, so tonight I'm giving you my award. Thank you so much for coming and thank you for being part of the Teachers Who Got Awards tonight. Had an awesome conversation the other day. Had an awesome conversation the other day with the teachers from the high school. And not that we're getting emotional because Mr. Bennet's not here, but he paid my brother George a high, a huge compliment in reference to the two kids growing up third poor and getting rocks for Christmas. That when we came to school every day, we didn't believe in ourselves. But we had teachers who, right here in Kingsburg High School, had teachers who believed in us more than we believed in ourselves. And that tradition hasn't changed because we saw it tonight. So for the principals and the senior principals and central office, it does not go unnoticed. It does not. I see it every day and the conversation I had in the high school at the Christmas party was amazing. He opened my eyes to a couple other things too that I don't see every day. So thank you guys. Thank you so much for doing everything that you do. Okay, so we asked Mr. Stone, the grounds crew, get an outstanding job, sir. Please send that up and down and change, please. And again, even though it's cold and even though it's icy as they walk to school, once they get on their grounds, they feel safe that they're, that they're being taken care of. The Kingsburg Curriculum is having a gift auction on February seventh. If you go to the girl website, you'll receive more information. The Kingsburg St. Patrick's Day parade is gonna be on the twenty-ninth of March. Information to follow. And sports. We understand that, I agree, and the girls are big tonight. So they're eleven and one. Again, not just are we signaling out the girls, but again, sixteen teams after buck class that Kingsburg came in sixth. So that's pretty cool, our big work. So again, you and I are little, we're, we have a small school, but we have a big heart. So, thank you. With that, I will take a motion. I don't have time to go home, I got another hour, so... But, got a motion, I think.
I'll make that motion.
All right, please everyone be safe at home and again, thank you for what you do.
All in favor?
Um, you said the...
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, yes, I'm second. Not to you first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.